Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The, I don't, Mrs. Bartholomew, I don't think our mics are on. The special Troy City Council meeting for May 9th is called to order at 6:00 PM. We're going to have the roll call, and we'll take a recess and go into the boardroom where we were going to originally meet, but we didn't know how many people would be here, and so therefore, we thought we better come in here. But we do, as you know, much better work sitting around the table for study sessions. So, we'll do that. May we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
President.
Lenning?
Here.
Howard-Lack?
Here.
Irwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
All are present. Council will take, will take five minutes. We're going to the other room. We're all invited to come into the council boardroom. Counselors in recess. (pause) (inaudible) 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 Session, we appreciate your indulgence while we move. The, the special meeting is to go from 6:00 until 8:00. We will have public comment at 7:50 for 10 minutes, and then anyone who wants to speak that did not get a chance to speak will be the first ones on the 8:30 meeting because the public comment section comes right up at the beginning of that meeting. If we get to public comment before then, if we're all done with council discussion, before then, we can ease into it before, but that's, that's the plan at this point. Okay. This is the proposed fiscal year 2011, '12 annual budget and three-year budget. This is an overview of budget and wrap-up and a decision on the library, which will be scheduled in the special meeting tonight. So, Mr. Zerlike, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Lamorato, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do receive some questions today relative to the budget advanced by Councilman Howard-Lack, and responses thereto are included in your handout. Also, a proposed library solution advanced by Councilman Dan Slater, which is also attached. And the order in which you take them is up to you.
Okay. And we have the proposal that I had suggested with resolutions for the next meeting, but doesn't mean we can't discuss those in this meeting. I should indicate to council members and to the audience that the reason that the suggested resolutions that I asked for have, don't have the number of mills and the years and the amount of dollars is that it was intended to be two resolutions to have council think about what they wanted to do as far as proposals and not to have preset numbers. But we have received data with information of dollars and mills before also that we could think about those and we know what other, some other communities have asked for. So, that's why those were in that form instead of with the information filled in. Is there a question about an area of the budget that council had that is not pertaining to the, to the library that someone wanted to ask about, something from previous, the previous two meetings that was discussed and perhaps not, they wanted more answer on, Councilwoman Bethelme?
Two things, and one is because, now my memory fails me, if I might ask Mr. Lamorato.
Yes.
Next year's budget, you expect the taxable or the revenues to decrease by 8%, 7.5%?
Taxable value, like a little 8%.
Okay, and the following year after that is?
Seven and five and five.
Thank you. Eight, seven.
And there is some additional information that was provided.
Right, there was a chart.
Chart from Adino Lucari, our city assessor, who kind of broke it out by category class and what.
Yeah, that was in response to Martin's question. And I guess the other thing I would ask as we, as we talk about it, and we've all sat in on enough seminars given by the people during the last couple of months, we're anticipating a $27 million police department, and that's about $2.5 million more than it used to be while everybody's taking cuts. And that 10% increase can't be all in union negotiated salary increases. So, particularly as we go forward with millage discussions tonight, we need to be able to explain that. Can you help us with that?
I can help, but I think Chief Mayor and with backup, Mr. Lamorato can explain it better than me relative to the police department budget increase.
It's just, it's the biggest chunk of the budget, so we need to be able to explain why there needs to be.
The, the bulk of the cost that we have an increase in is in our retirement costs, for personnel, personnel services. That data is information I get from Mr. Lamorato, where he just sends a cost for personal services over to us. That portion of the budget is a lot completed. We've had, I'm sorry, please.
You're explaining.
We've had a reduction in staff, but even though we've had a reduction in staff and less people, that other increase has driven our costs up.
Because there are fewer people paying into the system, so it has to be?
That is a question I will leave for Mr. Lamorato. If that's okay.
Sure.
In the police department budget, there, a majority of our remaining defined benefit people are in the police department out of all city departments. So, where all the other areas basically held the same, with their defined contribution amounts and so forth, the DB pension did go up, and a large portion of that is attributable, you know, and the police department is recorded there. That's where most of the people, or half of the DB people are in the police department. So, even though all, all new hires or all unions are in the DC plan, and it's about 80% of our employees are in DC, meaning 20%, which they have to make up the dollar amount. Doesn't matter what percentage of payroll, it's the dollar amount that has to be contributed.
Okay.
And majority of them are in the police department.
Because of the length of time that they've been here before the DC plan came into effect. Okay.
Thank you.
Other, yes, Councilman Lenning?
Yes. On the same line as Councilwoman Beltrameen, I'm struck at that as well, because I just like to understand if that's the full explanation, if that's the only explanation for the change. Because when I look at the 2010 actual to 2011 estimated actual, there's a million five increase, 6.1%. You look at 2011 estimated actual to 2012 proposed budget, there's another $1.6 million increase, or 6.1%. So, you take the two years together, we've got $3.1 million. I tried to go back and look at the individual divisions and look at the various increases. I saw some decrease, some increase significantly. But are we saying that basically what, what percentage of that is related to the pension issue? Because I tried to break it down by department, and like Councilwoman Beltrameen, I was almost lost to concern because of reducing pay and it's continuing to get along.
And your, for folks that are following, and their budget folks, it's 109?
Through 132.
Through 132, correct. And you were looking at the percent changes over on the side, where some are, you know, negative, you know, 14%, others are plus, yes.
Then I tried to look in total, that's where I came up with, you know, percentage of capital, I was just looking at the numbers, 2010 to 2011, there was 1.5 million increase. And 2011 estimated actual, what we anticipate being compared to the budget proposing to be is another 1.6 million.
Well, we can't, firstly, cannot combine estimated numbers from the current year to next year's budget.
Okay.
Each individual person in the police department is funded with their own unique fringe benefits. Whatever they have is budgeted and spread in the police department budget. That is the cost of it. We have a breakdown here, we don't have a summary for each item, and in general fund, we do a summary for all, each line item, but for the police department, there's not a summary for each line item within their budget here, through the backup information. But that is accounting for everyone that they have budgeted individual basis, and most of their budget, almost 80% of their budgets in personal services. So, that's where the numbers are, and that's the cost that's associated with it.
Okay, Councilman Slater?
To continue with that, the single most common comment that I heard during engagements and our business hours related to the police budget. But I think it's imperative that we make sure that we, we have this clear in everybody's mind before we move forward and ask for millages or, and/or anything else. So, also, I believe factored into that, that line item is zero concessions, basically, right now in the police department, even though we're going to have a meeting later on this evening regarding contracts and concessions, that, that budget does not contain any concession money. Is that correct?
That's for, for the TPOA or TCOA, there are no, there are no, I don't budget FCOMs. There's nothing been settled when the budget's developed, I don't, and.
I understand.
There's no, there's no money in there, there's no money, there's no reduction of funds.
I'm talking to, I'm talking to the people, not.
Right.
I'm, I'm just trying to get everybody to understand that the public is the one that needs to understand, not, not me. So, that's why I kind of need to ask these questions, because it is confusing. And they've asked the question just about every meeting that I've gone to, and it's been somewhat difficult for me to answer that question at times. So, the budget will be smaller if concessions are obtained before July 1st, and it could be, it could be significantly lower if it's 10% across the board. And I don't want to really get into a whole lot of that, but it could be reduced by 10%, give or take some of the MAP, but even MAP isn't calibrated in there yet.
MAP is calibrated, ASME is calibrated in the budgets. The 312 eligible departments are not, because there's no.
And if I, if I could just continue, part of the reason for the ERA program is to help also, and if, and I'm just going to guess, let's say 10 people in the police department decide to take advantage of the ERA program, that's going to be 10 less bodies that are funded in the police department, which will reduce that budget even more.
If not all 10 are replaced.
Well, I don't think we're looking at, we're looking at same jobs.
There's some replacements.
Understood, but I'm just trying to get.
Right, well, you can't, I can't say that there's going to be 10, 10 people, or 12 people, or five people, depends on how many are going to be replaced and then.
We wouldn't be offering the ERA program if we weren't hoping to get some, some benefit from it. And I, I'm just trying to explain that the police budget could be reduced, and hopefully will be reduced by a significant number, potentially. I don't, I don't want you to budget if comes either, but it could happen.
Could happen.
Could happen, and I hope it happens.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bethelme?
The other thing, and I don't know if we want to get into this tonight or not, but at some point, we also heard, and our budget is, you know, almost three times what Rochester Hills pays the county sheriff. Well, Rochester Hills doesn't have five exits on I-75 and two major malls and all of that other stuff that adds to police services. But I, I would like to see at some point a presentation on why we can't do it for 9.6, because I know we can't. And, and we do pay for some of those additional services that are important to our community, to the visitors who come here, and the workers who earn their money here. And, like I say, I know, just from my own experience, five exits on I-75 and that extra highway space does cost us money, and we want it protected. So, I think that we need to talk about those points at some point. I don't know if we want to do it tonight, but.
Chief Mayor and I will be happy to do that.
Okay.
That's a future point.
Oh.
I can throw some compliments, you can.
Yeah, Chief?
The, the easy answer is Rochester Hills is pleased by Hill County Sheriff's Office. They provide the policy service that they want up there. For us, we've got a third of, they've got a third of the personnel we have, so their budget is a third of ours, they have a third of the people. They don't provide the, their same types of services we do, they don't have a dispatch center there, they're not doing the fire runs. We do the fire runs here in Troy. We handle all the dispatch services here in Troy. We have a lockout facility here in Troy, so if someone gets arrested in town, and their family members want to come bond them out, they come to Troy to bond them out, they don't have to go up to Pontiac to bind them out. Those are just part of the services, it's the differences that we provide. We've got our own surveillance unit, they don't have a surveillance unit. So, there's a lot of other things, we give in more detail, but the easy answer is, they've got a third of the people we have, so it's a third of the cost.
A third of the service.
Yeah, it's a third of the service. We have our continuous ranking due to our partnership with the community that allows us to be one of the safest cities in Michigan continually, if they're not ranked. So, they're good people, they just have different levels of service.
Mr. Zerlike?
Two brief points in that regard, and I believe I'll be fairly accurate, please correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but there was a satisfaction survey done over the last few years, and in the city of Troy, the satisfaction of the police department by our residents was 98% very satisfied. In Rochester Hills, I think it was 78%, which is fair. I mean, if you want a fair, fair police department, you could have a model similar to that. One thing else you should know is that in Rochester Hills, having the sheriff's department, the geographical coverage area of those sheriff's deputies is essentially Oakland County where they have other jurisdictions. And what that means is that should there be a, an incident, say in Milford, Michigan, the sheriff's deputies in Rochester Hills could be called out to Milford, leaving not very good coverage in Rochester Hills. In the city of Troy, that would not happen, the local police department. So, we can discuss even more detailed, should be worth.
Mayor Fratton Curling?
I can understand the desire of my colleagues to really talk about that kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, because it becomes a question in the community. But as I watch the clock tick by, I'm hoping that we can get to some of the questions that were submitted. I know that we sat in here a week ago, and Councilmember Howard-Lack mentioned that he had a number of questions. I, I actually had looked forward to seeing them, I was disappointed to receive them so late that I wasn't able to get them on my, on my laptop at, at home. So, if we could get through some of those, and maybe some of the other ones, issues on the budget, I think that'd be a good use of our time.
Okay. I, I thought we were going to receive them from him to staff to answer earlier in the week, and then they came today. But I have one that goes to the chart that you requested, Councilman Howard-Lack, and that, Mr. Lamorato and Mr. Zerlike, is the valuations on, in commercial, industrial, and residential. You know, we've talked all along about the fact that beginning in 2014 and going very slowly up from 2014 to 2028, residential values will start to rise back to 2008 levels. But what is happening with commercial and industrial values as they are dropping, because they're dropping over the next few budgets, you see the figures here, will we be gaining those back, or will we not? And how does that affect how much one mill actually equates to in dollars? Because if we're, you know, we, we now have our, our millage rate, and we have so much money that comes in from the millage rate, regardless if it's residential, industrial, or commercial. But if, if we're having less come in, we're going to have less dollars come in. So, what's going to happen with residential, I mean, excuse me, with commercial and industrial?
Well, as noted in the chart here, our city assessor, commercial mainly office is still suffering high vacancy, driving rental rates down, and there are also a lot of tax tribunal appeals out there that will even further reduce those taxable values. And the problem with that, once the value is dropped down, even if you have, say, if you have an empty building and the value is taken down, next year it's 100% occupied. The most that can go up is the CPI with proposal A, so for this year, the most could have gone up as 1.7%, even if it was at the lowest value. So, it's not, that's a problem with proposal A.
Okay.
But you can go from a vacant building, and the next year it could be fully occupied, and you're still at, it would take you forever to get that building up to where it should be, just with the CPI adjustments and so forth each year. So, and also, the personal property, which is listed here, just flows with the commercial and industrial property vacancies and so forth. But even on top of that, there are still some discussions about eliminating the personal property. And there said there may be some, they're trying to get some kind of replacement of revenue or whatever for that, but right now, that, there's still discussions on that with the whole budget and so forth, and we're not sure where that's going, and that would be another, could be another potential hit to our revenue estimates.
Okay. Because our projections out for the three-year budgets going out, the drop continues, of course, and I was, just wanted to stress that that's the reason why, you know, we're looking out to look at what revenues are going to be available, because to have sustained funding for certain things, we have to know what those projections are. Okay. Yes, Councilman Howard-Lack?
What is the basis for the conclusion that is used to estimate the taxable property values in 2000, fiscal years 2013, 14, and 15?
These are based on, it's basically based on our current, what we think is going to happen in the residential market, there's some Oakland County projections, but it's basically what we think is going to happen. You have to look individually at your own community and what our vacancy rates are, and what we think is going to happen there, and that's, that's an estimate, going out three years.
I, I noticed the numbers are rounded, so I was curious as to, for example, in 2013, why you expect there to be 10% reduction in commercial property. From the year before, commercial real, industrial real, 20%, residential real, 5%, and the year after that, 7.5, 10, and 4, and so on and so forth.
Basically, because there's over 100 and some million dollars of Michigan tax tribunal cases that are in the commercial area, and a lot of those, there'll be, there's old cases, there's new cases each year, and we, there may be some severe adjustments in that area based on our vacancy, based on the income approach to determine those property values.
So, is, is there any, any particular reason why you wouldn't share those assumptions with the city councils, or?
I could have, me and Mr. Lucari could have answered better, Matt, yeah.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, you know, certainly that, that would be a great assistance, and it would be certainly a, something that would help us understand what's going on, because I understand the concept, what I don't understand is the relative change. And the other thing, too, is with residential, we're saying that through March of 2011, the residential market has bottomed out, older end homes are selling for slightly higher values, and higher-end homes are still selling far below their values three years ago. And, and the question is, you know, we're showing that beyond this current year, we're showing another approximately 12% reduction in residential values. That would imply that the upper-end homes are going to continue to take a significant hit beyond their already reduced values this year, if that statement is correct. And so, I would like to see, see where we're coming from, because I, I am, I have no idea where these numbers are coming from.
Well, they're coming from our city assessor, he could have probably written pages on every one of these property classes. He gave a brief summary here on what is going, he is a professional, level four certified assessor, and that's what his estimates are going forward.
Oh, yeah.
And based from Oakland County equalization reports and numbers also.
Right. As the elected fiduciaries of the city, I think it would help us to have that information available, not because we disagree with it, but because we need to understand the assumptions so that we can take that and, and to our constituents and explain it to them as well.
Mr. Zerly?
We'll be happy to have Mr. Lucari detail his methodology as well as our rate of accuracy over the past several years, which, what percentage do you think that is, John?
Pretty good.
98 percent?
I was just going to mention that the projections that were given to us back in 2008 and in 2009 and 10 have been, you know, very, very close. And so I think that speaks to his ability. But what, I guess what Councilwoman Harlock is asking is that he wants to understand about the methodology. He's not, he's not saying that his figures are incorrect. What he's saying is he just wants to understand about the methodology. Is that right?
Oh, sure. And I think this is also one of those things that we would, we could post on the, on our website too, to, to explain the, the city's assumptions and so on and so forth. Because I think, I think people, people anecdotally, I'm sure, are seeing certain residential property values stabilize. But what, what somebody who's not involved in commercial property doesn't realize is that, you know, it's a very devastated market right now.
Right. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor President Curley?
It's a very good point you make, and you make as well, Madam Mayor, because in the past, we really relied on that. We relied on what we always talked about, the balance. Isn't it great? We had some residential, we had the commercial with the industrial and, and the rest. And it's the, the commercial right now that's really, we're going to feel because of that inability of the pop-up when those buildings fill. And I think that that does make a very good point. We're looking at 40 percent of your tax base coming from something that's basically sealed off. No matter whether there are three people in a building and then it goes to 100 percent capacity, we'll still be left at that three people in the building property assessment. I attended this past Friday, the MML Regional Conference. They did a PowerPoint presentation. I know that we've been doing one recently where it talked about when will you expect to see property values the same as it was in 2007? And the answer which MML gave was never. And the never is because of the commercial. We may see the residential as Councilmember Harlock himself gradually increase, but because we are so heavily invested in our commercial properties, that blow is something that will never increase without a, a bill that would change it in, coming from our representatives. The other thing we have to consider is this personal property hit, which is pending now. So again, that's something that we need to keep an eye on and realize that that's something else that could affect our bottom line now and in the future. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Harlock?
Well, the other interesting, I mean, there, there's obviously a bright side to certain things as well. One of the things that becomes an economic incentive is the fact that we have a community with very inexpensive commercial space, both on rental and on the transactions. You can actually buy a building for a substantial less and you can replace it. And that, that makes us cost competitive, even though we may have higher property tax rates than in, in a state that either doesn't have a high rate, perhaps a Colorado or Wyoming, but it, it makes us more, more competitive. I did follow up on the police department issue with respect to the defined benefit contribution. I'm curious as to what the percentage, or I should say, what the percentage of the defined benefit payroll is that is in the police department.
What percentage of payroll or?
The defined benefit.
Contribution amount or what, or?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I guess there are a couple of ways to get to it. I mean, what percentage of, the police department is what percentage of defined benefit payroll or defined benefit contribution?
It's over half of the payroll. It's in the police department.
Are there any other reasons why these expenditure amounts have increased in the police department?
What items are, do you have any particular items in particular?
Well, depending on how you want to look at it. If you want to look at 2009 actual to 2011 estimated amount, you have a $1.28 million increase. Or if you just want to look at the 2011 amended budget to 2012 amended budget. But I guess I'm curious because we're showing personnel levels from 2009 to 2011 dropping by, from 192 on a full-time to 179 and a half. And for the entire city, we're only showing an increase in defined benefit contributions, not, I don't believe this includes health care, I'm not sure, of about $2 million. And we're also, so we're showing, that explains some of the, the increase, but we also have a significant decrease in personnel. And then we have a complete reduction of all of these community groups, Community Coalition, Evansdale Youth Assistance, Common Ground, Haven, and so on and so forth. So there has to be some other reason for the increase beyond the pension issue.
Are you looking at 2008 or what? I mean, the budget is looked at line item by line item for the police department. They submit their budget. We review each line item. We look at going back, we look at five years going back in each line item. Look at where they are this year through six or seven months of actual activity. And then we see if their projections are, and their estimate, their proposed budget seems reasonable. That's how the budget is done. Every single line item is looking at, looked at individually, going back five years, looking current year, and projected out for the next year. That's, that's, that's the number that is generated from looking at their budget. Now, where they come in and out, I would think everybody would be happy that our departments don't spend every penny of their budget. And we can return every year. Our expenditures come in under budget. So I think that'd be a positive. Sometimes it gets looked as a negative, but it's a positive that our departments don't spend every dollar that is allocated to them. They look out, they look try as a way to save money. Things happen during the year. This proposed budget is based on our best estimate of what we think is going to happen for the year. It's been scrutinized, it's been looked at individually, every line item. That's all I tell you.
Well, again, you know, I've had literally, I believe, two and a half dozen requests from constituents to explain the, the increase in the police department budget. All the while, personnel, their positions are decreasing. And, you know, I can't answer them because you've given me an answer and you've said that it's a defined benefit pension plan.
I said, that's part of it. Personnel, total personnel services in our summary here, it's gone up 783,000 from the current year budget. That's tied to their positions they have. Every fringe benefit, that's tied to every position in that budget. Like any other budget, that's what's happened. All the other budgets, you don't see any increases because everybody else has had hits. Almost every department has had a reduction, a lot more severe than the reduction here in the police department.
So I imagine as the budgetary officer of the city, you probably have analytical reviews you do from year to year. And perhaps that might be something you'd be willing to share with the city council so we'd have a better understanding of these differentials so that we can do our job.
Like I said, it's, the complete budget as you view it every year, we look at five years. We have the ability on one screen on our, with our computer system to look at every line item going back five years, budget to actual, what happened month by month. And that's what we use to analyze it. A lot of time is spent reviewing every line item. And methodology is 36 years of doing it. And that's how we do it. And that's how I've been doing it. And that's how the budget is prepared. It's not written down anywhere. It's from what you do and that's your job and that's how you do it. So.
I see that the chief has joined us here. Did you have something that you want him to add in?
Your Honor, perhaps what we could do is come back with the top five or 10 areas where there's been increases from the previous year. The top five or 10 areas where there's been decreases. And that would give you more of a flavor with specificity as to how the budget for the police department has increased.
Councilwoman Harlock, would you like that for the, are you talking about having it from before the 16th next time?
I, I think that would be fine. I mean, I, I get people that come up to me all the time and they say, you know, people who actually do take the time to look at our budget and they say, look, the positions are decreasing and the budget's increasing. What's going on? And the only thing I could do is, is try to find an answer. And I, I think that as we try to do our job, I think that, that sounds like a reasonable start.
Was there another area in your questioning that I did, I was able to get it on the computer at home and look. And a lot of the information that was provided in the answers to your question is information that we received over a period of time, you know? And so this puts it together in one thing. But was there something that was not clear in the written answers to you, Councilwoman Harlock, that came or something you wanted to ask about?
Let me, you know, let me, let me, I do have some questions, but perhaps some other people at the table have some questions as well. I don't want to, you know, dominate the time.
That's fine. I was just giving you that opportunity.
Sure.
Anyone from council, Councilman Fleming?
Yes, since the chief is going to dive into the details here, one area that I would...
I think we're going to, it's going to come back to us on the 16th.
Just a little direction here?
Yeah.
Look at business unit 315, the road patrol. That seems to be the largest increase in personnel services. There's probably a logical reason for it. But that's $980,000 from our amended budget to the proposed budget. So it's pretty significant. So when you look at 1.6 million increases, 980,000 there. I don't need an answer now, but I just think that would be a place we certainly want to focus on as well. Might be a logical answer.
Anyone else from council have a question in an area? Do you want to start the discussion about the, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman Harlock?
One, I did know, by the way, I appreciate these responses. And I also appreciate saying that we're going to get the actuarial valuation next month. That, that'll certainly, certainly help if it's large enough. I think we really, I guess, well, I don't want to mix two things, but I think that when we go forward this year, perhaps we can have updates to be in a more formal manner to the multi-year budget. I know last year was kind of our first year doing it, but that, that's, that's what I think we should do. So we're not up in April doing an amendment to the three-year budget four weeks before the budget study sessions. I did have a question though about the information technology charge to the library. And it says we have 108 library computers. And I imagine that includes staff as well as the bank. So those 108 computers, the bank is, how big is the bank? Is it about 50 or 45 or something?
We actually reduced, if you look at last year's budget, we did reduce the number of computers at the library. Last year's budget, 389,000 had been allotted for computers. And with the layoffs of staff, we decreased that number. And then we also took several computers from the Technology Center. We currently have 43 computers in the Technology Center. We do have four computers in the Teen Center and 12 computers in the Children's Internet Center. So that is 59 computers for public access. In addition to that, we do have eight, what we call PACS, Public Access Computers, which allow people to search the catalog on their own. So there are really about 67 computers available for the public. The rest are for staff.
Okay. The, I imagine the staff computers are more robust than the, the ones that the public uses because the functions are probably more.
Yes and no. We do use the Polaris system on the staff computers. However, in the Technology Center, we do have a lot of different programs. We allow people to scan documents. We allow people to, you know, look at various programs. There are, you know, we have service people who come in and Skype or families of service people who come in and Skype. So, you know, to quantify robustness is difficult because I think it depends on how, who's using the computer at times.
Sure, sure. I would agree with that. The question I asked at the last study session we had, not the last study session, but the last budget study session, was if we would need to hire anybody in IT if we kept the library open, meaning relative to the, would we need an additional person in IT relative to the projected budget with the closed library? The answer I got was one person. And I said, okay, that's fine. But I guess my, my discomfort is with the amount of charge from IT to the library. Because if you're basing it on 108 computers, that's almost $3,000 a computer. And I would offer you that maybe you just want to throw the computers out every three months and have, have new ones brought in. Because that, to me, just seems like an enormous amount of money.
Did they include the staff ones, the dollar figure?
The dollar figure, the $300,000 for the 108 computers, it's my understanding from the IT department, it does include the software that comes, but it also includes the staff's person support from IT. So for $300,000, we get Bob. He's included in, in that price.
It also includes all replacements, any upgrades, any changes, any printers, all that stuff that goes on over there. So that's the cost too. They don't have to budget when they have, when they need new computers. They don't have to budget capital money or whatever for that. This counts for replacement, all the software upgrades, everything else that goes with those computers. And it provides one, basically one staffing person that is, was physically located over there. That person, we are reducing their staff by one with a library not in operation next year. The staff has been reduced by one.
So your replacement schedule on these computers on average is three years, five years?
It's been growing. It's probably, I don't know, four to five years or something.
Yeah, I'd say between three and five. For example, my monitor, it, it died the other day and I got a new monitor and there was no charge to the budget. So I appreciated that very much. The computers that the IT, our representative, he comes in and does what they call reimage every so often. And that basically makes sure that we have our most up-to-date software so the public can use the most up-to-date.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, Mayor? I'd like to switch to the capital budget on page 236, first of all.
Capital budget for what do I like?
For the fleet.
For the fleet, okay.
For the fleet. I know that we have probably a very sophisticated system. I've heard it before, the department will need to replace vehicles and so forth. But looking at this, I see 1.4 million, over 1.4 million dollars for fleet replacement units for 2011, 12 budget. In addition, on page 144, in the fire department, I know that we have X of equipment, but we have budgeted apparatus replacement of 1.125 million there. My question is, could we look at that again and see if there's any way we can extend the life of these vehicles? If we've done a proper cost-benefit analysis of replacing these? We've had this discussion before. And I know we've had a model and we've used that in the good times, but now times are not so good. I think all of us may be, I know I am driving a vehicle that's got over 200,000 miles on it and getting every mile I can out of it. Obviously, we don't want cars broken down or fire trucks broken down on the road. But I think it deserves, for over 2.5 billion dollars just in the fleet maintenance, I would like us to take another look and make sure there's not some opportunity to extend the life of those vehicles and not spend that much money at this point. It's just my opinion. I'd like to see that.
Is that for all vehicles or just the fire apparatus?
No, I'm looking on page 236.
First the fleet and then the...
Which is the fleet, which is over 1.4 million there. And then the, the fire department separate on page 144 is a 1.125. I know there's replacements. I'm just saying that's, that's a lot of money. And it, I'd just like us to take a good, close look at it to see if there's any way we can delay any of those replacements. I'm sure we can't, are there something we can delay? Because we are in uncharted times here in uncharted territory of what we're having to do with replacing all the areas.
Mr. Zerly?
I believe that our, our fleet replacement methodology is pretty much parallel to how we replace streets. In other words, that we take it to its, its maximum life and, and look at the cost to extend that life in terms of other parts and labor. And then decide for each vehicle if it's time to replace it. But we'll be happy to, I'll make sure that statement's accurate by talking with Tim Richneck, our fellow vice director, Sam Lamorato, our fleet manager, as well as Chief Nelson on the fire apparatus, because that, that's the big, big piece of equipment that we're talking about. We'll be happy to do that.
Mayor President Curley?
Could I speak just to the fire specifically? I know that we're delaying binding the pumper because we just talked about that, right? We're going to, of course, so you asked, could we postpone something? So we're obviously postponing... postponing that, which is significant. I guess when we go in for our next meeting, we know that we have some backup material regarding the safety of our volunteers. That's a big concern for me. This is a volunteer force, and we have to ensure their safety in their equipment and everything that they do. So I know that it's a balance in terms of can we watch this, but I don't want to overbalance the other way. When you're talking about all of the volunteers depending upon this and giving their life and time, we want to ensure particularly with our fire folk, that they have the best that we can, and that when it has served its function, that we're not putting more money than we would into replacing and trying to continue that service, so.
Well, and at one point, Chief Nelson explained about when they purchase vehicles, how we get a special cost when we're purchasing them at a certain time, and I know we've asked that question before with them purchasing, so perhaps all of that could be rolled in when we, when you get your information. Okay, good. Another one?
Just, I'd never recommend that we put anyone's life in jeopardy, and I, we've done, had that discussion in the past, but I just think it needs, it needs another look. And we do have excellent equipment, and I think we should continue to have excellent equipment as a reward for those volunteers out there that are putting their life on the line, and just saying, I think it just deserves another, another look.
Councilman, again?
My question is maybe just to get a clarification in terms of the debt that we have that's budgeted, but each vehicle, I'm assuming, is still looked at.
Wait, I can't, I'm not hearing you.
Each vehicle is still looked at at a case-by-case basis, I think is what you're trying to say, so maybe we just need some more information about how that's determined, even though we have this set up, I would imagine that anything that ends up coming before us at the council table as an actual expense, I'm assuming there's a discussion that's had about case-by-case basis.
I believe that's, that to be exactly correct.
So maybe the policy has actually changed in terms of forwarding what they're actually going to put before council to replace, but maybe we just need an update on what that process is.
We'd be happy to do that. We also in-source our fleet department, eleven clients, many of which are municipalities, that rely on our fleet to maintain their vehicles in much the same way that we maintain ours, and we let those, those individual municipalities or clients know when it's time to replace their vehicles, and taking a look at it as well.
Okay. Are you folks ready for a discussion about, yes, Councilman Howard?
I believe about, I know this is kind of an ongoing discussion, people mention it totally, and we've talked about it on council, but I believe about two years ago, we had a fairly detailed list of positions that had either personal use, fleet vehicles, or a vehicle allowance, and my follow-up question to that I would have is, have, has there been any change to that since we received that information?
The only change there would be is by reducing the number of full-time employees from, by about 147, I think it's been, since our, our peak year of 2006-7. If those individuals had a vehicle assigned or vehicle allowance, that would no longer be a cost to the city. I recall no new positions receiving a vehicle or vehicle allowance, but I'll be happy to have Ms. Sears, our HR Director, verify that.
Now, is there any possibility of reducing the number of people that do have either a fleet vehicle or a vehicle allowance? I imagine there would, there would be a need for it, say, for example, in certain public safety functions, I understand that, but in other departments or in other positions, is that an area where, especially with the cost of fuel and the cost of maintenance on a vehicle, is that an area where we may, may look at reducing the amount of, or I should say, the use of those vehicles, or the amount of that stipend?
There's two answers. One answer is that with individuals that are assigned a vehicle through a collective bargaining agreement, really can't do anything until it's time to re-up the agreement. The other area is in the classified and exempt realm of Detroit, and those individuals that are assigned a vehicle, if they did not receive a vehicle, would then get paid mileage at whatever IRS rate is for reimbursement, and I don't know what that balance point, or that tip point would be to determine which is more cost-efficient or effective, but for a lot of the individuals that, that came on board to the city of Troy, that vehicle allowance, or that vehicle was part of an initial compensation package. When we spoke to those individuals as employee groups about obtaining concessions, I asked for 10%, and 10% of specs was based on the regiment city council, it was the sum of base wage, pension, FICA, workers' compensation, and so we've, you know, we've achieved that for the classified and exempt, we've achieved that now for the fire service staff officers. We're having an executive session tonight to talk about tentative agreements with MAP, AFSCME, and the command offices in the police department. And again, we have all these, these variables that are, that are cost, that, that cost, and we negotiated reductions there, too. I'll be asking an executive session strategically how to proceed from this point forward. It's a long answer right now.
Mayor Tom Curly?
I think to Councilmember Howard's point, though, I, I know that we looked at that list originally, and certainly someone who is on call 24 hours a day, someone for emergency makes sense, but I think that there is some merit in looking at that list once again, and ascertaining, does this fit one of those things? So I think that that's, that's a fair question, and we do hear it in the community. If I may, there's one other area.
Uh huh, go ahead.
Another thing besides car allowances, which we've seen on that top 20 list, and so people do have concerns about that, the other issue is longevity, and again, Mr. Manager, I know that you could go into collective bargaining and so on, however, I'm wondering if it might not be time to think about just rolling longevity into base pay and ending that concept of longevity, there aren't, there are very few on it anymore. It seems to me now would be the time to consider just rolling it into the base pay and ending longevity after that, and that might be a good solution. And again, that's one of the other things we hear in the community quite a bit, so I put that out there as a, as something else that has been on my mind as well.
I'd appreciate discussing, discussing that again when we have a closed session about ramifications there, too, for doing that.
I think it's time to throw things out here.
Okay, I'll throw it out then. Longevity becomes part of base pay, increases the overall cost of the city of Troy in terms of vacation payouts and sick payouts, so it would actually cost more to include longevity in someone's base pay. Also, if that individual made time and half and was not exempt, which is everybody, with the exception of the exempt class, their time and a half for over 40 hours worked in a week, or eight hours in a day, could be more than it is now, so that would not be economically advantageous to the city of Troy.
I think in terms of something to consider going forward, this is something that we need to consider, I'm telling you that, and I think what's being shared around this table tonight, what you're hearing from council members, is reflections of what we hear in the community. That response you just gave isn't going to be a big hit in the community either, so I think that we have to really look at some of these things that have been difficult to discuss before, but now we have to put them on the table, because what we're, we see over and over is a question of trust and of what we're doing, and what people around this table tonight are trying to get a handle on is our job as overseers. That's what we're looking at the budget, and we're bringing up different things, not only in response to our own homework, but to what citizens ask over and over.
Councilman Fleming, you had another question?
Yes, just a comment, suggestion. Page 72 in our budget is the council budget, includes the council expenses. I think as a council, we're asking people to make concessions and do things, all departments, I think we need to lead by example. By that, I'm suggesting that we reduce the council budget, that we eliminate the travel from the budget, telephone allowance I get, fax that I get, eliminate that from the budget. I'm not sure what each of you get, but I know I get a quarterly check for that, that's to be eliminated. In addition, I'm recommending that the council, albeit it's small, it's leading by example, reduce the monthly wage that we get by 20%.
The salary is in the charters, so we take a charter revision, and folks should know that the salary figure for council members is $175 a month before taxes.
Right.
And FICA and everything, so it is, really covers just gas and expenses, for example, the phone, the computer, all of that, that we use in our work here at the, at the table, but that is something that we can talk about, but it is a small amount compared to the big amount that I'd like to talk about, and that is the library. Councilman Howard, like I said, before we go, talking about the library?
It is. I would actually like to have a trade-off, I think, you know, if I, if I even had, you know, if I even had a telephone, I don't, I think Councilman Slater and I are the two that don't spend any money, and I think that one of the trade-offs that we could have is if council would give up its telephone allowance and its, and its travel allowance, perhaps we could use that to restore something like the Jamfest, you know, I think that's a nice trade-off, and, you know, when things get better, then we can relook at that, but I would like to see us do that. Also, let me just see if I understand this, and, and this has been a cause for concern on my part, when we talk about 10%, make sure I get all these roll-ups correct, you're only referring to wage and benefit roll-ups, base pay, pension, workers' compensation, FICA, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so we're not including vacation, sick pay, or healthcare?
That's correct.
Okay. What about, when you say pension, you're not including the, the retiree healthcare costs, then, or are you?
No.
Okay. And, and the thing we need to remember, too, is we actually never had a discussion about this in an open session, and we certainly didn't have a discussion about it other than, actually, we never had a discussion about it as far as classified and exempt, because there's not a represented employee group, and we didn't really have anything to approve. So as, as far as I'm concerned, when we're talking 10%, 10% is everything, you take the entire cost to employ that individual, and you cut that by 10%, that's what, that's what 10% means to me.
If I could respond, and then, of course, the final interpretation is up to city council, all I have is documentation to support my following statement, and that is that on three separate occasions, there was an indication, two of them was approval by city council, a governing body, that a 10% reduction of payroll costs that we were trying to achieve was the sum of payroll, pension, FICA, and workers' comp. I included that in my response, I attached the memorandum where, and provided quotations as to when that was given to city council on specific dates, and there was approval by the governing body with that operational definition, given to me by the governing body for the fire service staff officers and for the ERIP program for classified exempt personnel. I mean, that's, that's all I can say, and, you know, if mayor and council want to modify that operational definition, you'll, you'll need to do that.
Thank you. Councilman Howard?
Well, one of the reasons why this is important is when we're talking about saving services and saving the jobs that go with those services, one, certainly one of the ways to, to accomplish that is through concessions, and so, for example, when we're talking in the police department, if there are concessions there, then that, that certainly is a source to reinsert four or more positions, if it's certainly the governing body's directive, but the, as far as the TFSOA, you know, when you, we make that adjustment, you actually get pretty close to 10% in their case, anyway, because I think they had 13 or 16%, depending on what your, your level was. So when you make that adjustment, you're, you're getting pretty close to 10. The, the other two, as you know, I voted against one, and then the other one, so I just wanted to reiterate that, and if, certainly if council concurs with that direction, then, then, you know, when it's presented to me, I'll just vote against it, but I think that we need to, you know, have, have an understanding about what 10% means, and if that's what it means, fine. I also have concern, because there was something that was handed out at the public engagement session, and one of the employee groups was actually, we counted a foregone pay increase as a concession, which essentially puts them at a different playing level than other union groups who didn't get a concession, or didn't have a pay raise coming to them, which means that they actually have a different starting point, and when you're talking about fairness and equity, I think we also need to have relative fairness and equity amongst the unions as well.
The question has been put forward from several of us about what we're going to do with regards to the library, because in this budget, there is no funding indicated. This year, the fiscal year, we're on a half of the library as far as materials and staff, et cetera, so it's at $2,685,000, and at $55,000. That represents approximately .57 mils, according to Mr. Lamorato's answer here. The library's total budget for fiscal year previous, 2009-10, was $4,570,000, $700,000, and that is approximately .97 mils, according to what Mr. Lamorato has here. Both myself and Councilman Slater have put forward suggestions that, to talk about, because we, through our discussions with the council, council has said, because we have requests from the citizenry, that rather than closing the library, that we keep it open until August, August 2nd, could be an election date, because that is one on the calendar, and we could levy up to 1 mil, several communities went, you know, just with a 1 mil, or we could do .97, whatever we want to do, for a 10-year period, which would give sustained funding to the library and generate enough money for it to be the kind of library that I think from all the emails, comments, statements that people want, is a full-service library, and that the millage could be levied on the winter tax bill annually, if it is voted on in time to do that. The second proposal and resolution that I had is one for dedicated funding for operating millage for road maintenance and snow plowing. We may or may not want to do two things at the August ballot, we may want to go with just one, the library, although both of those items were high up in the ranking of what people had requested. So I brought those forward and purposely did not have dollar amounts or millage inserted, because I want it to be our resolution, all of us coming in, and I knew that you'd come forward with ideas. Councilman Slater has come forward with something, and I'd like him to talk a little bit about his suggestion, if he'd like to, at this point.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying that this is not my suggestion or solution. I based this entirely on what I consider sources, other sources, and if you want, I can go through my bullet points and talk a little bit about that, and maybe we can expand on it if need be, but I, I listened to the community conversations, I went to most of them, I've had office hours, and so I based it on that. The ICMA study, the statistical survey, listening in community and communicating with all of city council members, I think you all can say that I've sought you out, spoke to you individually, and talked, talked about this. I've also listened to the community input from various groups and took that into consideration. I've had conversations with city administrators and staff. I've had conversations with city administrators and staff. I've paid attention to what the media has said, believe it or not. And it's also based on compromise. This is not my solution that I would propose if it was just me, okay? So I came up with some recommendations after listening, watching, and doing my homework. And I firmly believe that this time we should concentrate on one goal. We shouldn't have more than one goal at this time, and that is to maintain a full-service Troy Public Library. And I believe that's supported by all council, mayor included. I think it's supported by the community from what I've heard. I believe roads, snow removal, public safety are important, but I really believe we must concentrate on one goal at a time. And I don't think we still have enough data to look at second and third goals at this time anyways. So my opinion is that the goal should be reached as soon as possible, and that's because it's cost-efficient and it gives an opportunity for a standalone goal. I think additional revenue is needed to reach that goal, and I say that, that's supported, that is supported by the majority of this City Council, from what I've heard. I think it's supported by the city administration, and I think there is support in the community for that. I think the millage increase is needed to reach this goal. And once again, I think that's supported by the majority of City Council. And supported by city administration, and there is support in the community for that. But the community asks us to ask for what we need. They want us to accomplish targeted employee concessions. And I believe that the community feels they are getting value, they will approve the millage So I think there should be an August vote, and that's because it's cost-efficient to do it in August. There's less bridge money if you're going to bridge. I believe that is supported by the majority of this City Council. I believe there's support in the community for an up-and-down vote with outside interference or influences. I believe that the revenue is collected and allocated either better than in November. I also think that we should provide bridge funding to keep the library open until the millage vote. Once again, I think it's cost-efficient. I believe six months of funding and maintaining staff are, or six weeks, I'm sorry, funding and maintaining staff are less costly than shutting down the library and restarting or reopening. Once again, I think this is supported by the majority of City Council. I think it's supported by city administration, and I think it's supported by the community. I believe that, based on what I've heard, the millage should be dedicated to funding the library, should be dedicated. Once again, I believe that's supported by the majority of this City Council. And there is support in the community, and I base that on the trust issue. And once again, the library will close immediately if the millage is defeated. That's because there's no funding available. So in conclusion, I think we should determine the amount of revenue necessary to fund a full-service public library, and that will be determined tonight. I think we should request a millage that will fund the necessary revenue, and that can be determined tonight. I think we should request an August vote. I think we should provide full-service bridge funding until August, till the August vote. That money would be determined also tonight. And the millage increase should be dedicated to the library. Then I think we should focus on roads, snow removal, and public safety after all the data is known. If revenue is needed, it should not be tied to or included with a library-millage vote. I firmly believe the library issue should stand alone. So I bring that forward tonight, hoping for it to be a starting point in discussion rather than just, well, let's move around the table and see what everybody thinks. So I bring that up, and I can discuss any of the bullet points in further detail if needed, but that is kind of an outline of what I present.
And I have a question. We'll certainly hear from all council members on this matter. Mr. Lamorato, is that correct? Did I get the correct numbers on, for a full-service library that we had previously on the numbers in that is approximately .97 mils?
That's with our current taxable value.
With the current taxable value?
With next year's, with the reduction next year in taxable value, full service is a dollar four.
Okay.
The current operating is about .62 mils for the 55-hour. And of course, keeping in mind that that would, if it's a 10-year levy, that with reductions in taxable value for the next several years.
Right.
It'd have to, you know, work within those, whatever that tax generates, and it'll be a reduction in our budget basically for the next several years.
Okay. So if we went with one mil, which is close to .97, it would, speaking of bridging, bridge that amount, we're only be having the reduction so that the full-service library would continue to get sufficient funding for the latest in, in materials, have enough staff, have enough hours, that kind of thing, okay? And that's the reason, the reason that I'm being so specific about it is that I think that the compromise that Councilman Slater is suggesting, after seeing the heat in his own thinking, I did mine, and I proposed the two different resolutions that we can talk about, it's coming on the council referrals in the next meeting too, that the compromise of having the standalone library vote would speak to the things that we've talked about that we'd like to do if the funding would be available. And with having an August vote, it would mean, because there's funding now through June 30th, that we would just be funding the library in the month of July until we have the vote, and then we'd know we're going to have money coming in. We could then base that, and this would give Mr. Lamorato time, you know, when we do our budget meeting vote next on the 16th, we need to know, oh, we're having the library in, oh, we're having the library out. So we really need to make these decisions. So I'd like to hear from some of the, would you too, like, Councilman Slater, like to hear? Okay. Mayor Pretend Kerwin?
Well, I think you all have a copy of this agenda. If you, if you will, turn to our goals. And the first one is to provide a safe, clean, and livable city. The next, provide effective and efficient local government, build the community, attract and retain business investment. I think this year we failed miserably when we did not provide safe roads. Roads came out over and over and over again. To Councilmember Harrell's point that we now have kind of a cost-competitive, commercial area where it truly is for the square footage, but who in the world would come and move a business where we can't even clear the roads from snow? That was the number-one thing that came through. I think that you all agree in terms of email messages, nothing compared to snow removal and roads. It is something that we've been extremely proud about in our city. It has been a sense of pride. You knew when you weren't trying because the roads were down to the pavement and clean within 24 hours, and we lost that. So I disagree with my colleague regarding, you know, two things at one time. I, I'm a woman, I do many things all the time. So I'm a multitasker, but out of everything that came through the community conversations, out of every conversation with people, was that idea of the safety in terms of roads, and they didn't have it. Meals on Wheels, couldn't get meals to those who are shut in and rely on that, people who have home businesses or work from home, were not receiving mail or able to get UPS packages out. We have seven fine school districts. There are consequences when they can't get to school because of snow in terms of their obligation to return that money to the state. There are, many people use and love the library. It is the heart of the community. I support the library. Every single person relies on having safe travel, whether they work here, whether they live here, or whether they drive through the city. And I think that we really need to consider adding roads, returning our standards to our 24-hour removal, which is something that I know people appreciated, so that they can get out of their homes safely, so that they can have their mail delivered, so that should they need meals coming into their homes, they're able to eat. All of those things go to the goals that you see in front of you, a safe, clean, livable city, effective and efficient local government, the community itself, and attracting and retaining business investment. So I implore you to consider, I don't really, I don't, I don't see the disadvantage of putting two things on an August ballot. I think it's paramount that we include roads and our return to a safe, livable city through having carefully maintained roads, not only in terms of snow removal, which I bring up, but also in terms of moving our roads, especially those that are fair poor, into the good category. And just a week ago, wasn't it? We had the presentation which delineated the amounts in terms of that. You can choose the amounts we want to go. But I do implore my colleagues to consider about what we went through. We know, looking at this budget, that we do not have the funds to take us back to 24-hour snow removal, and we need to plan for that. We need to plan for the purchase of RD icing, for hires, and we need to have all of that in place well before November so that we can be sure that when a snowflake falls, we're ready to go.
So you're suggesting there be two millage proposals? They're separate, they're not tied together, they're just on the same ballot, but they're completely separate?
I would support two, two millages for dedicated funds. I would not slight roads. It's my number-one priority.
Anyone else want to speak on this?
I just, just to rebuttal, if I could, I didn't go into great detail in my reasoning. I'm not here to debate whether there should be more funding to roads or snow removal. I just think there's a different way to go about it, okay? We don't have enough data, in my opinion, at this time to make a May 15 decision on that. We, if we get our concessions, if we get our ERIP program in place and free up some funding somewhere else out of this budget, there are some things that we can look forward to doing, I think, in reallocating the funds. In no way am I saying that it's not important. I just think let's concentrate on this goal, and we can do possibly other things and see where we go with that, but.
Besides Mayor Pretend Kerwin and Councilman Slater, any other council members that want to speak on this issue before we go back to those two? Anybody? Any of the councilmen? Yes, Councilman Horle?
Well, I think everyone at this council agrees that we need the library and we need the safe roads. Timing issue. The difficulty that I'm having with a special millage is, sitting here tonight, we all know, we don't know what the budget expenses are going to be. We think that we budgeted probably more than we need in some departments, you know? We don't, certainly don't want to be cut short, but I think that concessions are taking place, negotiations are ongoing. I believe we have the funding now in the budget, anticipating, anticipation of what we're going to get in the negotiations that are currently in place, that we can fund the library without having a special millage election. I think we should.
Are you speaking of a half, folks please, are you speaking of the half-funded library we have now, not a full service? Ladies and gentlemen, please, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm speaking for now. The library that we have now, the library that we have budgeted now, we can fund that library going forward for the next year and probably future year without a special millage. And speaking to the roads, that's a smaller financial issue, problem than I think the library is. I think we can solve that with hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars, okay? But we need to solve it, I agree. But the library specifically, I believe we have the money in the budget in anticipation of what's being negotiated now, that we have it. It's not a question of whether we have it to fund the library we have now, and maybe even more services than we have now.
The road funding, if you're just talking about snow plowing, it's one number, but if you're talking about maintenance of the roads, bringing them to better condition, the local roads, then, then it does go into millions.
It's like 27, 27 million.
Right. And I don't know if anybody else wants to talk on this. Do, are you ready to say anything, Councilman Gass? No one signaled. I mean, I'm not making a time if you don't want to talk about it. Anybody?
Sure.
Councilman Horle?
Yeah, I would concur with that. You know, I would...